We will reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, March 22, 2022. Any final action to report?
No final action, Madam Mayor.
Okay. In which case, we will convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, March 22, 2022. If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Council members Chalam Chirla?
Here.
Kozlowski?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Aquino?
Here.
And Howell?
Here. And if you will all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any agenda updates?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. There is one additional information transmittal for item number four on tonight's agenda. A copy has been previously provided to you, and it is also available on the table in the back.
Okay. With that, we move on to business from the floor. Looks like we have a couple of requests to speak.
You do. Your first request to speak is from Chandra Vinikota, who will be followed by Judy Alexander. So if you want to come on down? When you get ready to start, we'll start the three minutes. You can, the podium microphone is best.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor and ladies and gentlemen, council members, I am coming from an, my name is Chandra Vinikota. I am coming from a nonprofit organization which is a spiritual, we have a spiritual center, which is a religious neutral organization. We are having an event in Orangeville, starting from April 12th to April 16th. We want to invite you for that event to understand, and we are doing this event for the world peace. So, we request, I mean, your presence there. That's the reason I came here, and I have invitations here for, on your names. I just want to hand over here. You can take it out.
You can, I'm handing to the police officer on the...
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Judy Alexander.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. Thank you. On behalf of the Board of Directors of Heart of Folsom, thank you for funding the Heart of Folsom Transitional Housing Programs this year. The $15,000 allocated to Heart in the 2012, 2021, 22 city budget was used to pay rent for four months at Bidwell Studios. Our four apartments are full. Each studio apartment rent is $1,062 a month, a total monthly expense of $4,248. The first person moved in in October, the second and third in November, and the fourth in December. We house three women and one man. Ages range from 20 to mid 70s. As you may recall, these are clean and sober apartments. Each person has a mentor to help them on their journeys. In addition, we support two men and one woman in other transitional housing outside of Bidwell Studios. Heart concentrated your funding on Bidwell Studios so we could clearly report how it was spent. The Folsom Winter Shelter, of whom Bev Zeiss is the director this year, is coming to an end of its 12-week run this week. Fourteen faith communities, four restaurants, rotary clubs, over eighty Heart volunteers, and even more host church volunteers work together to accomplish this feat. Bev Zeiss will ask for an agenda item at a future meeting to report the details. But as we made new relationships and encouraged sobriety, jobs, and hope, we know we need to add units to our program, and Heart continues to plan for those. As you consider how to use funds remaining in the ARPA account and the upcoming fiscal year's budget, Heart hopes you remember that the city and so many supportive community members are working together in creative ways to minimize homelessness and at-risk communities here in Folsom. You are making a difference, and Heart says, "Thank you."
You have no additional requests to speak under business from the floor.
Okay. So that moves us on to scheduled presentations, and the first one is proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Folsom. So if... Bryn Miller, will you meet me down front? Thank you to the clerk's office for the larger font this week. This is a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming April 10th to 16th, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Folsom. Whereas Folsom's communication dispatchers are a vital link to our police officers, monitoring radio activity, providing information, and enhancing their safety, and whereas the safety of our emergency responders is dependent on the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who call the City of Folsom Public Safety Answering Point, and whereas even in times of crisis, communications dispatchers of the City of Folsom are responsible for answering incoming calls for emergency services and dispatching assistance to help save the lives and property of our citizens, and whereas in 2021, Folsom's communications dispatchers handled more than 89,000 telephone calls and dispatched more than 55,402 events, and whereas in 2021, Folsom's communications dispatchers answered 99% of all 911 calls in 15 seconds or less, and any time I've called, it's been within two seconds. Whereas Folsom's communications dispatchers contribute substantially to the apprehension of criminals, and whereas Folsom's communication dispatchers exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, now therefore I, Kerry Howell, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 10th to 16th, 2022, as National Public Telecommunicators Week in the City of Folsom, and extend our gratitude to Folsom's communication dispatchers for their dedicated service to our community, their diligence, and commitment to keeping our city and our citizens safe. Proclaim this 22nd day of March, 2022. Thank you. We have Bryn Miller here, one of our dispatchers, and our chief of police.
And Bryn is our dispatcher of the year this year.
Ah, congratulations.
Awesome.
Just that no one over at our department does our jobs for any type of recognition. We all love just helping people every way that we have to, but it's an honor to be recognized and to serve the City of Folsom. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Congratulations. And our next scheduled presentation is Resolution of Commendation honoring the Folsom High Bulldog Football Team for an outstanding season, and I have asked former Mayor and council members Kozlowski to do this because he's the track coach at Vista.
You can have everybody with you.
Head coach and co-head coach, Coach Doherty and Coach Banning, come on up.
Sure thing. Okay, so I'm going to hand you this, because I have my own copy to read, and I wanted to...
Question that...
Okay, so what the resolution says is Folsom High School Bulldogs varsity football team, this is a commendation, resolution of commendation for their 2021 California Interscholastic Federation State Division 1AA Football Championship. Folsom High's varsity football team brought home the California Interscholastic Federation CIF NorCal Regional Division 1AA Football Championship and the CIF State Division 1AA Runner-Up for 2021 and defeated De La Salle High School for the first time in Sacquahkeen Section history.
Woo-hoo!
Yeah, yeah.
So that's the headline, right?
Yeah.
And Folsom High's varsity football team won the Sacquahkeen Division 1 Section Championship for the eighth time in 11 years, and the 10th section championship in football, and final season ranking of number one in Northern California, and 19 players were named to the Sacramento Bee's All-Metro Team, and the championship team was led by outstanding head coach Paul Doherty, who was recently named Sacramento Bee Coach of the Year. Coach Doherty and his players were successfully supported by a talented assistant coaching staff that includes Jordan Banning, Jalen Angel, Tim Carroll, Jordan Ursick, Val Lalagi, Bailey Lalagi, Robert Lobis, Adam Lopez, Matt Nivoni, okay, Zach Slater, Slater, and Matt Watson. The players' parents are to be praised and thanked for their support of their student athletes, including countless hours spent supporting practices and cheering from the bleachers. I was one of those parents once upon a time, and washing stinky sports clothes is part of that duty also. Special thank you is extended to Folsom High's principal, Howard Cadenhead, the school's students, countless fans in Folsom and beyond for their unwavering support of the team. Now therefore I, Mike Kozlowski, on behalf of Kerry M. Howell, Mayor of the City of Folsom, and on behalf of the Folsom City Council and the residents of Folsom, do hereby congratulate the Folsom High School Bulldogs varsity football team for their extremely successful 2021 season, and extend best wishes for their future endeavors. Pass and approve this 22nd day of March, 2022. Peter Maroon, District Athletic Director, congratulations also.
Thank you, sir, on behalf of the team and Folsom High School. Principal Cadenhead's in the back. So Howard, thank you. If I may, just take a few minutes of all four pages I wrote just for this, Kerry. No, no, I'm not kidding. I have four, no, I'm just kidding, four pages. I really do want to extend a courtesy thank you to all the different things that happen in this community, specifically under the auspices of the City Council, with the city manager, Elaine's support, Lorraine's support from Park and Rag, Derek Perez, and what he's done with the FAA. All those different youth programs contribute to the success of athletic programs in the community. I can't say enough about Mike Fellow and his FAA directors and what they've done, and obviously the legacy that was left behind by Ernie Sheldon. So with that, this is the fifth state championship this football team has attended in the last 10 years, which is a tremendous attribute to the administration and the coaching staff at Folsom High. Jordan's a graduate from Folsom High, 2001, so it's great to see our students, our athletes, come back and support the program and be a part of it. That just goes to show and demonstrate the success that we have and the family atmosphere that we basically emphasize in our culture and our community. So with that, thanks to City Council, City Manager, for all that you guys have done. Appreciate this award accolade.
Kerry, can I just comment?
Yes.
So I just want to share that I made a trip to Mission Viejo for the state championship against Cathedral Catholic, and it was an amazing game. But what I really appreciated coming back was the enthusiasm from the bleachers where Folsom had just as many families and support as Cathedral Catholic. So congratulations to you guys. It was a great game and, you know.
And honestly, as much as I would have loved to have seen you guys win the state championship, I was, and full disclosure, I'm a Red Sox fan, so you guys beating De La Salle, I was over the moon. You guys are awesome.
Jesse, can you guys, oh, right.
I was gonna say, let's face that, we got City Council behind us. I gotta tell you a quick story. I was down there watching the state championship, and I had four kids that are growing up, I grew up in Folsom, went to school in Folsom, young at the bleachers. I'm like, "Who are you guys?" And they were like, "Hey, Mr. Maroon." I'm like, "Oh, my God, class of 98, class of 97." They were there to watch the game. It was awesome.
Yeah, great energy.
That's great.
But you've got the flag. You should hold it up.
Right here. Come on, squeeze in. Total up. He's only pretty tight, I think.
All right. Great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations again, guys. And with that, we will move on to the consent calendar. Anybody like to pull anything from consent?
I would like to pull item four, please.
Okay. Anybody else want to pull anything else?
I'll move three through 14 with the exception of four.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Call the roll, please.
Council member Chalam Chirla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes.
I don't, I don't need a presentation, but I did think Mr. Delp brought up some good points as far as the cultural resources inventory. Maybe we could just get more specific by saying, you know, how many, whatever, items or something were nominated. I know, you know, there was at least one. Folsom State Prison was nominated for the cultural resources list. And then I just had a couple of comments. Mr. Delp also mentioned the noise, let's see, what page is this? Page 38 of 52, action SN-1, and he talks about the noise reduction program. And I didn't know if he wanted to include something, I believe, and Chief Hellman can give you the specifics, but I believe we had dozens of officers who participated in a CHP training or something last year to kind of identify and to learn how to identify and cite vehicles that have been illegally modified. I think it's something that Sergeant Beatty was already certified on, and I believe we had a lot of officers go through the CHP program for that. So I was just thinking, you know, some of these things are pretty generic, and we could add some specificity to them. Page 39, SN5, it talks about closing open space as a strategy to prevent wildfires. And I just think as much info as we can put in there to defend that practice, because it's been very successful, and if I have my numbers right, I believe in 2021, there were 47 human-caused fires in open space. And according to the mayor, in her State of the City address, we haven't had a human-caused wildfire since we put that in place. So I think just some specificity to, so that we can defend that, assuming we want to continue that, which I think we do.
Here's the population around.
And then I was just, just kind of a food-for-thought question, page 19 and 20. It talks about a corporation yard special study, and then it talks about the River District. And I was just wondering if it makes sense to have that all be, are we going to look at the corporation yard when we're talking about a River District study?
So you're just wondering if they should be merged together or linked together somehow?
Yeah, or, I mean, when we used to go to talk about the River District plan, will the corporation yard, I guess, be included in that? So not necessarily an adjustment that needs to be made to this chart when you submit it to the state, but that's just kind of my question.
I think that's a really, sorry. I think that's a really good idea, but there has to be some distinction, because the city owns the corp yard, and everything else that's being considered as part of the River District is actually owned by the federal government and leased by the state of California, so.
Right. I understand that, but I think a lot of the, I mean, we do own some property, I think, besides the corp yard. So, but yes, I get that point, so.
Okay.
I think we very naturally discuss the corp yard as part of a River District conversation.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Council member Aquino. I, you know, the intent of this report is to provide general information about what's been implemented. We hear you. We can absolutely include more information in this type of report moving forward, and that's something we coordinate with each of the departments, so we can fine-tune that to put in quantifiable information and make it a more usable document for people who are tracking that implementation.
Yeah, I don't want to create a lot more work for you guys, but I think just, you know, a little bit of detail to add some specificity. I think it's a valid point, and I was kind of noticing that as I was reading through it also.
Yeah. The state mandates certain provisions be included as it relates to the housing element, but really not in other provisions, so we can do that moving forward. Okay, thank you.
With that, I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Just before we move on, I understand that we have a hand raised, so the caller online, are you here to talk about item number four from the consent calendar?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, that caller raised their hand and now has dropped off the line. So if there's anybody online who would like to speak, now would be the time.
Relative to item number four on consent.
I'm not seeing any hands raised or...
Okay. I'm sorry, Sarah, did you make a motion?
Yes, I made a motion to move the item.
And I seconded it.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Council member Chalam Chirla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. And with that, we will move on to...
Joint City Council meeting?
Yes.
The roll call of council members Chalam Chirla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Aquino?
Here.
And Howell?
Yes.
One item on this joint agenda is your consent calendar. I have no request to pull any of those items.
Do you have any council members that would like to pull either of those two items?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Do you have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Call the roll, please.
Council members Chalam Chirla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. So we will adjourn the joint City Council meeting, joint City Council agenda for Folsom Redevelopment Successor Agency, Folsom Public Financing Authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, South of 50 Parking Authority meeting. And we will move on, we will reconvene the City Council meeting and move on to City Manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. The draft Active Transportation Plan is now available for public comment. It's otherwise known as the ATP. It will combine and update the master plans for both pedestrian and bicycle facilities within the City of Folsom. The ATP will guide the planning, development, and maintenance of existing and future bicycle and pedestrian facilities within the city, including recommended citywide active transportation network improvements and safe routes to schools. The public comment period is from March 18th through April 24th, and you can submit comments through the interactive draft ATP website. We also have three opportunities for public hearings. First is March 24th at 4:00 p.m. as part of the Traffic Safety Committee. Next up is at the Parks and Rec Commission on April 5th at 6:30 p.m., and then on April 12th, before this body, the City Council, at 6:30 p.m. The Folsom City Council held the fifth bi-district public hearing on March 8th. Following public comments and discussions, the City Council adopted Preferred Map 2 as the final district map and completed the process to transition from an at-large to a bi-district system of electing council members in the future. The City Council determined that members of the City Council from Council Districts 1, 3, and 5 will be elected in a bi-district basis, beginning with the general municipal election in 2022, and members of the City Council from Council Districts 2 and 4 will be elected on a bi-district basis, beginning with the general municipal election in 2024. The Council conducted the second meeting and adopted the ordinance tonight. There is now a 30-day waiting period before the ordinance will take effect on April 22nd. Registration for Fun Factory and Kindergarten Readiness opens 7:00 a.m. on this coming Tuesday at webtrack.folsom.ca.us if you wish to enroll your children or know of someone who would like to. We are hosting the League of California Cities Sacramento Valley Division Membership Luncheon Meeting this Friday, and at last count, I heard 50 people are attending. First in-person meeting in two years, so that's exciting. And then finally, the City of Folsom has commissioned McGuire Research and Godby Research to conduct research on important issues in Folsom. To our community, we would appreciate your response. If you are contacted, responses will be kept confidential and anonymous, and responses will only be used for specific research and reported in the aggregate. And for more information, please contact the City Manager's Office, that's me, and you can also email city.survey@folsom.ca.us. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council comments. Sarah?
I would just ask that we adjourn this meeting in memory of Jesse Ballard. He was a gentleman who came to the first four years of the Heart Winter Shelter, the first year that my husband and I volunteered there. My husband recognized him. He was Jesse's PE teacher 25 years ago. And very unfortunately, you know, when the winter shelter started this year, where everybody's kind of, "Where's Jesse? Where's Jesse?", because he's always been. Very unfortunately, we found out recently that he had passed away in sometime last year. I don't know the details or the circumstances, but I remember talking to him once, where he was telling me that where he went to high school, and I mentioned this in my State of the City address, when I was the mayor, that the cafeteria worker took him under her wing and tried to provide him with some direction, because he really got the short end of the stick when it came to parents. And I think it was just such a profound message for all of us, that it doesn't have to be a teacher, it doesn't have to be the coach, it can be the custodial, the cafeteria worker, the office lady, you know, anybody. We can all make a difference in somebody's life. So if we could just adjourn in memory of Jesse.
Thank you. Mike?
Just a couple of quick things. The agendas for both SECOG and STA were pretty light this past month, so there was mostly legislative updates that we talked about, so no real action on anything. Except for with STA, STA, there's going to be a ballot measure to extend the abandoned vehicle fee and update it to kind of catch up with the times. I would encourage everyone to support this particular ballot measure. It is a tax, but it is a grand total of $1 a year, so it's absolutely worth it, and it is the way that we, throughout the county of Sacramento, pay for abandoned vehicles to be removed from our streets and deposited where they belong. So that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Mike?
I have a couple of things. I'll make it fast. I met with a group, Residents Against Illegal Fireworks. July 4th is coming, and they are very passionate about it, and they want to help our city how we can communicate more effectively. And the recent ordinance also, probably, Elaine, I'll touch base with you, and Christine as well. And also, they are very passionate on enforcement on their day, and they have some maps and technology. I said, "You know what? Let's bring them on. We love to test it out." And also, they were talking about our police support and all those. I said, "Well, it costs." I said it, right? You know, it's additional enforcement, and maybe they are willing to work with us on that as well. So I'll share with those ones and see whether we can have a much better enforcement on the illegal fireworks. That's one. And Cal Cities, thank you, Elaine, I think we are going to be there. I'm trying to bounce some ideas on, right now, I think the survey is in motion for Folsom, how to, you know, grasp from the residents, see what other 57 cities, whether they have ever done anything, or so what is working best for them. So I tried to, I know, Mike, I think I mentioned to you, and I mentioned to this to Charles, he's going to bring it in that 90 minutes. If there is a five-minute slot, he's going to ask the 57 cities if there is any inputs and feedback to City of Folsom, right? That's a good one. And also, the last one, I met with the city, our county supervisor, Sue Frost, in a couple of items. It's a catch-up as well, but one thing I emphasized, and she agreed, that we can continue discussion about that green waste, organic green waste. And I know, I mentioned before also, you know, we got to go back one more time to at least the county health officer. She's willing to bring the county health officer and see whether we can even find the spots to pick up the garbage for every two weeks rather than every week. So.
That's an interesting conversation, but that's a state law.
Yeah. Again, it's, she's going to bring the county health officer and see how this is going to go.
That's great, but it's a state law, so the county health officer can't do anything about it.
Well, the discussion has to start at some point and go back to the legislatures for amendment if it is needed. So that's where I think we are going right now, otherwise. Other than the diapers and dog poop, there is nothing much going on into the garbage. Why can't we pick up the garbage every two weeks? Why do we have to pick up every week? So, anyway, long story short, again, it is, it is a lot of money on the residents, and of course, it's not only a lot of money, so much additional vehicles, public works, they're buying more. It is doing more damage than doing good, in my opinion, but anyway. I just want to, you know, have a heartfelt talks with the supervisor, because they are our next level to pull this up, maybe legislatures down the road. But with that, sorry, I took a long time. Thank you, and good evening, Folsom.
Okay. Rosario?
Yep. Looking forward to the Folsom Chamber of Commerce Awards this Thursday evening. This is such a fun event, because it highlights businesses and individuals that make our city a great place to live. Also, the Folsom Wine Fest is Saturday, April 2nd, on that Saturday evening at the Palladio. And the Historic District has some spring concerts that start on Sunday, April 3rd at 1:00 p.m. at the Amphitheater. This is a great way to support your art. This is a great way to support your arts and culture, and plus, those concerts are always great. It's National Women's History Month, and I just want to say that it is an honor to serve with Elaine and Sarah and Kerry. You know, it's, I'd just like to recognize just dynamic women that serve the city.
I feel like, I feel more historical right now, but...
No comment. And also, just keep supporting your local businesses. That's it.
Thank you. So nothing new to report on regional transit, other than, you know, we're moving forward with, as Mike mentioned, extension of...
A pair of the extensions.
Yeah, extension of Measure A, and that is something that I know that regional transit...
They're going down separate paths. There's going to be a measure, I'm sorry, there's going to be two measures. There's a citizens initiative that is to extend Measure A. There's a separate distinct one that STA is putting forward that is just for the abandoned vehicle.
That has to do with the abandoned vehicles, right.
Yeah, which is, which is a dollar that you currently already pay on your vehicle registration. It would just extend it.
Right. The work continues on Folsom's end of the connector. There are currently installations going on. I know I've seen them in my neighborhood of, relative to some of the broadband installations. And I had a chat with both Pam and Elaine earlier today about that subject and what we might want to do to ensure that our pavement remains in good condition once that work has been completed, and if we move forward with another contractor on that. No news on the Sacramento Placerville rail JPA, just trail construction going on at various locations, mostly south of the freeway, and no news on regional sand at the moment. So just a reminder, please slow down. Stoplights apply to you. Stop signs apply to you. The speed limit applies to you. And thank you once again to Folsom PD for catching those criminals that were breaking into cars at Cal Fit and managed to crash into a tree, and, you know, it's kind of a comedy of errors, but, and I'm pretty much going to guess that most criminals don't watch city council meetings, but if they have friends that do, please warn your criminal friends that Folsom is not the place to be doing bad stuff, because our police department will catch you. Thank you to all the men and women of the Folsom Police Department for all the great things that you do, and that was epic the other day. So thanks again. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting in honor of Jesse. Thank you.
It's 7:03.